Is that new? I gotta wait. I don't know, but it hurt.
There's a support right here that she hit her, what, me on, yeah.
I got one here.
Have you hit it before too?
Okay, welcome everybody to our Riverdale Planning Commission meeting for December the 12th, 2023. We have no one here to, all of our commissioners are in attendance and we don't have any visitors to make comments. So we'll go right down to presentations or reports. Mr. Aggett.
Thank you. As noted, Shake Shack will have a preview kind of dinner, friends and family trial meal opportunity tomorrow. And then they have a formal ribbon cutting grand opening on Thursday at 10:15 and they'll be open to the public at 11:00. Ashley Furniture continues to move forward in their efforts. Still a little slower, but it is moving forward. Tesla is at the point where they're doing some major groundwork and utility work up on their site. Napa Auto Parts is getting close to completing their space and we anticipate coordinating a grand opening ribbon cutting event with them in the near future. Chuck E. Cheese, their building permit has been issued and they are planning to do design review committee in January. And the Panera site is a little bit stuck until we can work through some RDA assistance discussions and then they still have some UDOT concerns. IDK BBQ is moving forward on their building permits still, but it's taking a little slower. I noted Walmart is doing a building update and relocating the customer pickup experience to the south. And, and then discussed that America First Credit Union has a master plan project that they represent or presented to the RDA board last Tuesday night during their council and RDA board meeting. And there was a lot of discussion about that. So I advise the planning commission to look at it, the public who's interested to look at that if they're curious. And then I noted 5600 South had some concerns and the mayor articulated that we need to represent to the, the team running that project that they better sign coming off of I-15, the lanes they should be in to go where they need to go. So with that, I think that's everything unless there's questions for me that were missed upstairs. Thank you.
Anyone? Okay, we could go on to the consent items for October the 24th, November the 14th and November the 28th. If there are no questions and comments, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items for consideration of meeting minutes from October 24th, November 14th and November 28th for the work sessions and regular meetings.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And that is unanimous. Thank you so much. Okay, action item. Public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding proposed updates to Title 10, Chapter 21 subdivisions ordinance as found in the Riverdale City Code is requested by the Community Development Department and required by the state of Utah. Mr. Aggett.
Thank you. I'll, I'll cover briefly the executive summary in your packet. I think there's a lot of good narrative here that explains it and, and you're all familiar with it, but just for the sake of, of anybody who may be watching or listening to this later. Senate Bill 174 that was passed by the senate, or excuse me, the, the state legislature this last session, it was back in February. Is the impetus for the ordinance amendment draft for subdivisions as found in Title 10, Chapter 21 of our code. We did, we have been working on trying to, to come in complete compliance with those legislative mandates. Specifically for land use development ordinance is tied to single family dwellings, two family dwellings and townhomes subdivisions. This mandate needs to be approved through, or be approved per the state of Utah for any cities that are in first class to second class counties or first class cities. And the code needs to reflect those state codes by or before February 1st, 2024. Also, a part of that has been updating the code in subdivisions to better reflect the history and the administration of subdivisions. As basically we've been operating internally as a city for probably the last 15 or 20 years, but there's some things that were not codified very clearly. They're very explicitly codified with this presented draft. So that you'll see that in there and further a very clearly, hopefully clearly bifurcated procedural behavior for single family, two family and townhome subdivisions versus multiple family residential, commercial subdivision and manufacturing use subdivisions. So that, that is the desire there. So hopefully if and when, which we assume there will be probably an audit comes thereafter, February 1st will be shown as being in compliance and, and get a, at least an A or an A minus on the report card by the state legislature. That's the hope and the intent. With that, there's no general plan guidance obviously for that. The public hearing notices in your packet, you can see that. I just put in there again, previously, Mr. Douglas's comments from our last review, just for the sake of, of making it clear. I've attached the direction from the Utah League of Cities and Towns per their, the, their attorney Todd Godfrey as far as the guidelines for Senate Bill 174 amendments to code. And I've, I have worked to follow it very closely in my efforts. And so we, we can discuss further the merits of that in the second part of this. The only other thing I will note is we have engaged Smith Hardvickson to assist us with this. I've been working closely with Lisa Watts Baskin. She's unable to attend tonight, but she's directed Jay Springer to represent their guidance and assistance on this process. So if you have any questions for him, he is also here as a resource. And with that, I would defer to the, the planning commission if you'd like to move forward with the public hearing and go from there. Thank you.
Could we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion that we open the public hearing for the proposed, regarding the proposed updates to Title 10, Chapter 21 subdivisions ordinance found in Riverdale City Code.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Do we need a poll?
You're fine.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
I would just note that we're down on a public hearing, Kathy.
That we're what?
Just note that we're in a public hearing.
We are in a public hearing. Do we have? Did you want to make any comments or do we have questions?
I'm available to answer any questions you have. I do have some questionnaire that I sent over for policy questions. But that's, that's all, that doesn't have to be in the public hearing.
That, that's what I would say is we can wait till after the first part, the public hearing. But, but there are, just for the record, no other persons in attendance at the meeting at this time.
Have anybody? Questions?
I would say there's no one in public, you could close the public hearing.
Okay, then we can close the public hearing. We've been very, very well made aware of what's going on and had all of, everything from.
So we need a motion.
So yeah, so we're ready for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
And that's unanimous as well. Can we go on to our consideration to forward a recommendation to the city council regarding the proposed updates to Title 10, Chapter 21 subdivisions ordinance as found in the Riverdale City Code as requested by the Community Development Department and required by the state of Utah.
Do you want me now further elaborate? I do have a little bit more. Okay. So where I ran out of time in the work session, what I wanted to note, just following from it and I apologize to Mr. Springer. He wasn't privy to our previous conversations, but I basically just give him the history of how he ended up to where we are at the moment. So I did receive to that point, going with what I was saying upstairs, at 5:36, an email from Lisa Watts Baskin who stated the following. She says, Mike, I've reviewed your changes and accepted, accepted them in large part. I made some stylistic changes to the single family residence sections, but see the multi-family sections did not mirror those same stylistic changes. So that's true in that there are a lot of recommendations she made because she focused solely on the stuff that, that is trying to be in compliant with SB 174. But then that second half, that's, that's the multifamily and stuff, doesn't quite reflect those changes as closely because she didn't scrutinize it as closely. Because there was so much to, to look at. And so what she's saying is she and I probably have to work and try to make sure that then that second half is, is a copy where appropriate of the first half language. So it matches from her recommendations. So just note that. I suggest you let the PC know that there, those will be uniform stylistically once finalized. This is great work and a lot to ask of cities. So thank you. Jay Springer will be there in person tonight to assist. I'm sorry to miss the meeting, but I have a previous commitment. I'm happy to assist further in the days ahead. Have a good night. So I think we're in a really good spot from that perspective. Mr. Springer did note too, that he has provided a questionnaire. I did look at the questionnaire and I, I did not share it with the planning commission because I figured you're already overwhelmed with this. But basically if you have questions of him about the questionnaire, I, I looked through it and I think that we meet everything on the questionnaire or exceed. And, and I think Ms. Watts Baskin also evidences as such. But clearly he's certainly here as a resource. If you'd like to, to engage with him on their efforts, they have been very helpful in helping me to make sure we're, we're in alignment. That being said, and at any point, if you want to, to add a comment or, you know, jump in, please feel free to do so. This is, is a discussion, but I do want to explain where we're at. So what I changed or what I did is I, the first thing was very obvious that I missed is I didn't update the table of contents. And even then there have been updates to the table of contents to further clarify it. So they, they've kind of gotten wordy, but, but that's on purpose again to show very clearly where something is if somebody was looking and they wanted a menu where they were at. So that's the first thing. The next thing that happened, there were, there were quite a few definitions that were added. Like applicant, there's a, a direction to, to get rid of terminology subdivider and developer and just make it applicant throughout the entire code. So any instance of subdivider developer is now just applicant and a definition of such. There is a definition of complete subdivision land use application that's been added and these will be reflected in the email I sent later this, this afternoon to all of you. A little bit of addition to the review cycle. Addition of subdivision improvement plans definition, subdivision ordinance review definition, subdivision plan review definition. Then there's some, there's some directives and alterations to the pre-application, like noting optional right in the header. So if someone were to look at that and they go to that, they'll see it says right in that header, pre-application concept review optional for, and then it explains that process. A lot of that process wasn't changed too much other than to make more paragraphs and kind of break it up. So it's a little more clear. So you don't run into stuff and it looks like one gigantic paragraph. That's Article C. There's some relief to the reader that, that we've got some, some breaks. So that was very helpful. And clearly she also recommended some verbiage changes throughout that I've included. Let's see. Again, 1021-5 out of the word complete application for some of the same comments that the biggest thing that, that we were going back and forth on is what is the administrative land use authority? And we're all on the same page now. The planning commission is the administrative land use authority, as I noted in the work session. And the reason I want to make that clear and explain that is because state code clearly says the administrative land use authority is the preliminary application, review and approval entity. So what that, why that matters as far as I can see it and as far as talking with her, it makes sense is it gives limited vesting rights to a project. And we've talked about this before in the past, even with our current process. So with you being the administrative land use authority, if you recommend, or if you approve a preliminary application and make a recommendation to the city to move forward to final, you're basically saying on behalf of the city and the residents, we're good at least with the, the nature of this project and where it's heading. And we expect staff to vet it and make sure all the, the requirements are met before staff then approves it. So that's why it's such a, it's such an important responsibility to be aware of. And that's why that terminology matters so much. That's why the state of Utah made it clear. They don't want the city councils to be involved because they're legislative bodies. So they create laws. You basically make sure that, that from a, and I don't even want to give it a percentile number, but from a cursory perspective, the project's in the right direction, the pre-application has been vetted and you feel like staff has a good grasp on what's going on with the project as well as the developer. But make sure if there ever was a check in the future of the project, if and when this code gets approved, that it matches city codes legitimately make it clear that it's not ready to go forward, even at a preliminary level. That's why that matters, that designation. Okay?
Well, and that, our approval gives them certain rights as well.
Right, limited vesting. Yeah. And so you're basically telling them that, yeah, now you have a legal right to continue forward to work with staff on a final, checking all the boxes, if you will, of those final review steps. And one more thing I needed to remind too, the, the planning commission, which was, it, it's articulated a little later, but we only have four reviews. It's, it's a four review shot clock and it starts the minute that the, the planning commission does that preliminary review, that's the first review. And so at that point, whether you table it or not, even if you were to table it, you're, you're basically at that point, for lack of a better way of saying it, taking away from the staff, one of those review opportunities if they need three in the, the future. So you have to make sure to think that through as you strategize when to make those calls. You take away one of the reviews.
You're using one of the extra.
Then when we bring it back up, is actually a second review, it's not a continuation.
That's right. Yeah. So make sure that your reviews are good, especially if the applicant feels like they made it a completed review. And that, and there's some acceptance criteria and stuff I'm still working through with her that I need to further make sure is more clear in the code. That's kind of under fourth review. She, she noted that. So I'll work on that even further to make some of those little nitty gritty things more clear. But yes, that's, that's the, in theory. Just trying to see if there's anything that jumps out at me as far as. So when you look at 1021-7, this is where I was talking about, there's quite a few new terms that were included. Waiver, effective material changes, applicants failure to submit revised plan. What the, the applicant's rights are after the final review cycle to be in compliance or not to be in compliance and what is a, a completed application. Then what they can do as far as pursuing like appeals or, or review processes that back and forth and how then a dispute is, is resolved or addressed. So those are things I was saying upstairs that the state code is clear on that I was directed to include just to make it even more clear that we will follow state procedure in that aspect. So you'll see that. Yeah.
Did, do we not allow, and maybe I've missed some, or no guest houses are allowed. I've seen you, that was taken out.
Yeah, she, she, she pulled it because she says, well, is this try, is this a predecessor for IADUs? And it's a good question. And if we're going to talk, if it's going to create confusion.
Take it out.
And take it out. It, it doesn't need to be there. It's kind of antiquated anyway, especially it kind of really put me back when I saw the word servant in there. I was like, whoa. We've got terminology that says servant in our land use code. It says guest or servant. So. But anyway, I, I think that's a good recommendation where we are going into this world with IADUs. And I have a feeling that the state legislature right now, we only as a city allow IADUs, but I have a feeling the state legislature is going to push it to where people will be able to have backyard ADUs whether we like it or not. I think that's coming.
There's been certain square footage of each yard.
Yep, you had certain sized lot and setback stuff. So.
But with this terminology, we got rid of that. There is no ADU, only internal.
Yeah, currently we have only internal accessory dwelling units, but I think that that's going to be forced to change. So kind of if you want to call it checking the wind, I just stripped it because I think it's going to be irrelevant to have guest house in our code. And her comment signaled to me, it's probably.
Especially without definitions.
Yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't matter in our day and age. It maybe mattered 20 years ago, but it doesn't matter in our day and age. So moving forward, let's see here. Just some things about, she further helped me clarify some of the expectations with sketches and that sort of thing as far as what we're looking for in a submittal. See if there's anything else. Again, applicant throughout. One thing that was interesting too is, this is a major one I need to point out, on the expiring plat. So if, and if a preliminary plat is, is, they don't act with an ear and it's set to expire. They come back to the planning commission because you approved the preliminary plat and they can ask for six months with, for cause, right? With the show of cause. But if on the final plat, they want an extension, they go then to the, the, the city planning staff committee for that extension, which makes sense because they'd be the one that would have approved that in the first place. That way, there's no cross, cross hybridization of, of who does what. So that is going to be a permanent change that, that we're being recommended to do to make sure it matches on that process as well. And remember, city staff's obligation will be to check boxes and make sure going right through code and there's nothing missing. So at some point, we're all going to learn together, planning commission's going to have to learn how to feel how comfortable they are to send it to staff if it's at that point that it's ready to do so. And so you may even find out through a process that, hey, this code is broken or isn't working. That it won't apply to that, that application, but it's something we need to address in future rounds so that it's not broken on future rounds. So we may vet code that way.
So right now the process is it goes to staff and then it comes to us. That will reverse.
It'll, so it'll come to staff for pre-application.
Okay.
Then it'll go to the planning commission.
Okay.
And then it'll come back to staff for the final check and approval. It's basically checking boxes at that point.
Okay, so it does go to them first and then comes to us.
The, the conceptual is just to say, tell us about your project. Here's what we think. These are utility requirements. Here's, you know, here's the application. These are the timelines. This is how the process works, right?
And isn't that optional?
That's optional.
Now in the code, right. So it could technically come to planning commission first.
And I'm going to advise developers that that probably will be a mistake. In fact, it even, if you look at the language that I emailed to you, her, her comments, which I really liked how she worded it. The city highly recommends a pre-application concept plan review meeting prior to submitting a preliminary subdivision plat application. A, a pre-application concept plan meeting is optional and does not count toward the maximum number of review cycles for subdivision land use applications. So that, I think that's good because it's kind of saying like, if you want to take your chances and go to planning commission, you do have that right, but it may not be the best way to go about doing it, especially if staff's been telling you they didn't even talk to us about utilities. They didn't talk to, you know what I mean? Then it's going to kind of make it easy to say, check boxes. And this is where, where I know I, I said that tabling it is a second review, but if it's not even a complete application, that's where I have to kind of get down to really the narrow nature of that to see if even that would count as a review. Cause if they didn't do their job to even submit a full and complete application to the planning commission and you table it, that could be grounds to say that wasn't even a review because they never come, submitted a fully complete application. They just wanted to come to the planning commission. So there is a really kind of weird gray area there that has to be explored and we might have to explore it by trial and error, for lack of a better way to say it. But that's what I need to talk with Lisa about, try to find a way to, to make me make that a little more clear what that is to make it a complete submittal. So there is that. The only other thing I would note that I know needs to be worked on, but it, it's still an area that I caught this morning as I was thinking about it based on her comments is with small subdivisions. And with small subdivisions, the way it's written now, it doesn't work as far as clarifying the bifurcation nature of what kind of subdivisions, who would review what kind of subdivisions as far as it being a, a condensed or shorter process. And so I tried to use some wording, but she said in a comment, which I agree with, this reads clunky. We need to revise this further. So. But the idea is that right now, if, if somebody brought a small subdivision with 10 or fewer lots, they could do a meets and bounds with a, with a, like a survey plan, a survey plan map, right? And come to the planning commission theoretically once and city council once and, right? That would still be the same for multi-family commercial manufacturing use, but obviously a single family, two family, that sort of thing would go through the other process, which would be one-time planning commission, shortened review process with staff at that point. Again, the intent's still there that it should be a lot easier to review. But it's hard to articulate that with the way that the code's written there. So that's something that needs to be cleaned up now that it's been bifurcated. And I'm not quite sure, I, I think it's probably just going to come down to making one really big, clunky sentence to two or three more clear sentences to explain how the process works, depending on what type of, of small subdivision it is. So.
Hey Mike?
Yeah.
With that small subdivision on 1021-16, does that also take into effect, nothing changes as far as the lot sizes or the roads or the streets or the, the widths of the
Eight, the eight.
sidewalks, nothing changes on the small subdivision from the standard subdivision?
No, standard doesn't get revised. Just if those items A through D are hit, you see how there's items A through D. If those are matched, then the applicant is entitled to a small subdivision and review. But they're still subject to all the standards of the city. It doesn't change that nature. Just that the process, the intent is that the process be simpler, right? Cause it should be because there's a lot less to review.
I mean, like sidewalk width.
All that's still the same.
All that's the same.
Yeah.
Fire hydrants.
Yeah.
Item E on that, paragraph E talks about effective material changes. That can reset that for a review shot clock on that. So.
Where, where are you at?
Yeah, which section are you at?
It's the 420, uh, 1021-7 paragraph E. It talks about effective material changes.
Yeah.
Seven?
Yeah. That would reset that. So.
Yeah.
What?
Now I know what you're saying.
What are those material changes going to look like? Do we have any idea?
When you, when you find that out, will you let me know? Not to be facetious, but, but the state legislature has told us that, but I don't know that any of us really quite know what that is, right?
So we were on a call this earlier today on the.
Do you want to come up Jay, maybe get to the microphone?
We were on a call today with the, you know, the municipal attorneys association with probably 40 attorneys that represent different cities and nobody had an answer for that. Right. So.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be, well, the way, the way that I see it is that's going to be a touch point for developers and then completeness of an application.
Which comes back to that gray area I was talking about. Yep. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And just to circle by, back for a second. So if they were to do a pre, preliminary plan with the city.
Yeah.
Would that count as the first?
If, if they do.
Part of the cycle?
Are you talking about if, if supervisor opts to, or not supervisor, applicant opts to not do a pre-application, they just submit? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying if they do do a, if they meet with the city and do a preliminary.
No, it's, it's clear a pre-application does not count as a review.
Okay.
It's articulated that way.
All right. So that gives a little more time to make sure everything is squared away neatly.
Yeah, the clock starts when they come to you, if they have a complete application. But again, that's where it creates a gray area.
Right.
If they try to, I don't want to say it this way, but I'm going to, if they tried to bully staff and say, we don't want to talk to you. We're just going right to your planning commission. When do we call them out and say, you don't have a complete application? Then they say, well, we're entitled. That means that then the planning commission is the administrative land use authority has to be heavy and say, you have, you don't have a complete application. So this number one isn't a review and number two, we're tabling it until you can get a complete application. But like Jason, like I said, that's going to be kind of the hard thing to figure. When, what is a complete land use application? And see, that's something we're going to have to figure out.
Right. And is that something that you can figure out now? Or is that something that's going to come out later? Like when it goes through appeals process?
I know what I think it is because I think it mirrors what our process already is. But if a developer wants to bully their weight around and says something differently, who, who determines whether it is or isn't at that point? I know what it is for Riverdale city because I've been doing it for 10 years and I don't see it having to change. I think it's, it's an application. It's a preliminary subdivision in site plan. So plat and plan, right? With the information.
And is that something that we can put into the code?
It's in there that way.
Okay.
It's in there that way. But again, whether the state of, of Utah will agree with
Right.
our definition or not, is going to be the gray area.
Right, okay.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
Um, one of the requirements in the bill is that the city posts a
Yeah.
list of everything they have to have in their preliminary and final applications.
And we do have that on, on our forms.
So we will have that.
Yeah.
And if they, so the preliminary has to check all those boxes. Does it have these plans? Does it have the specifications? The final review has to then say, okay, well you had the plans, but your sidewalks weren't wide enough. So you didn't comply with code. So then you're, that's what traditionally we've called technical review.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And then, and then the question becomes to that point, if they don't meet it, then it's not a complete submission. So it doesn't count as a review until they correct the, the previous comment. So there is, we do have, we do have legitimate control over those processes. But again, if we get challenged.
You're not sure how it will go.
Who's, who's going to check that challenge from a developer? It's kind of a new, bold new world in that aspect.
So if they try to bully the city, you know, and they say, we're just going to go right to the commission. We can put the brakes on it at that point.
If they can, if we can, if I can articulate or staff can articulate, in our opinion, they don't have a clear, complete application. Yes.
Right. You've given them the opportunity. They had the information they needed. They did not submit it completely.
Completed. Yep. And they try to say, well, state code says I can. Okay, I guess we'll take you and waste your time, I guess. But yeah, then I will say, planning commission, in staff's opinion, this is not a complete application that's been. Planning commission, in staff's opinion, this is not a complete application that's been submitted. And remember, you're the administrative land use authority by code at that point, which is established by the state of Utah code.
Right.
So it does create some responsibility.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
And again, that, that's all I have, but if you have further questions for me or Mr. Springer. Great opportunity. Like he said, he wa, I, I know he was in that meeting because Steve Brooks was in the same meeting earlier today, so. And Lisa, who did the work for us, was also in that meeting earlier today, so. Uh, Mr. Springer may have additional ideas or comments if you have.
As I was going through it. You know, so. I don't think, you know, you, you've gone through the questionnaire pretty much. I do have a newer version for you.
Oh, okay.
Added a couple of questions. And those are, those are the policy questions that just you have options. And so we've kind of raised those. Um, one comment in ten twenty-one five. Um, it says upon completing the procedures in ten twenty-one four, which is now optional. So I think we kind of need to strike that. Um, it's just when they come to the, the city, as we were just discussing, they don't have to go through the, the pre-process. But they, we're recommending that they do. I also noticed we reduced the number of large prints from eight to four. But there's more than four bodies that are entitled to prints.
That, that, that is one thing I changed it. So now it says one, instead of one print, one copy of the submitted preliminary subdivision plan. Cause a lot of the department heads like to receive it digitally and not print. So that's why I, I, I did add in that, but you may not have that addendum. Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then the, the other thing, um, and I want to be very clear about this. The timer starts right before, when they submit an application, not when you review it. So if they submit a complete application and we sit on it for ten days. We're out of time.
Yeah.
And we have, and then we're, we're out of that review cycle. So it's not based on when you see it. It's based on when they submit it.
Which comes back, which comes back a little bit to what I was trying to articulate upstairs is. That's how our current process is, just so you know, Jay. Uh, so if somebody submits. I always tell them, if you want to go to the planning commission, you have to submit by or before. The end of the day at five o'clock Tuesday, two weeks prior to the planning commission date you're trying to target. So that would be that ten business days. So that, that matches what our current behavior is.
Right, but if they submit, if they were to submit today.
Yeah.
If, once this was in place, we would still have that same ten days.
Right.
Regardless of when the next planned meeting is. So that's. Yeah. So we can't tell them, we're only gonna accept it ten days before.
I see what you're saying.
So that.
So holidays, weekends, it's all counting.
Well, it's business days.
Then I may go back to fifteen days, Jay, in the code.
That's one of the biggest concerns. Cause the applicant determines the day. And then we're recommending, and, and I think this is consistent with Todd Godfrey's recommendation. That someone, whoever it is, determines the completeness of an application within forty-eight hours of forty, within two business days. Basically, because in that first ten business days or fifteen business days, you have to determine completeness. But if you determine completeness, it's still from the day they submitted it. So then you, then we have to do the first round of review. By, you know, now we have eight days or thirteen days left. Um, so that's, that's gonna be really big. Um, we're gonna have to be on top of it. There are companies that are out there that have developed software just to help people comply with the timelines on SB one seventy-four.
And I will tell you that, that I can, I can tell whether or not an application is complete, probably within a matter of. Thirty minutes to an hour, meaning it's gonna be pretty easy to know the basics of, of whether or not they're complete.
Giving us essentially three weeks.
Yeah, but yeah.
Looking at, I mean, if you look at, if somebody was to submit. A completed application tomorrow, I think we, we still would not meet the fifteen days based on the holiday.
Right.
So then.
But, but the holidays don't count.
Yeah, so I think we would still run out of time. Would we have to?
We'd have to have a meeting on the twenty-seventh. Yep, that's. We would, what we would do is we would just have to change our calendar and make sure there's enough advance notice knowing that and make that an available date for a meeting. That's what we would do in that scenario.
Okay.
Yep, that is what we would do.
Yeah, um, and, and that's, that's one of those policy decisions. Um, with a lot of, a lot of my clients that have planning commissions that only meet once a month. Um, they don't want to be the administrative land use authority because they don't want to have special meetings, basically. Um, but that's, that's a hundred percent up to, up to each individual city. So, um, it sounds like you guys have, have picked that way. And then the, the other.
Real quick, Jay, sorry to interrupt. I need to clarify when I said so boldly, when I say an hour, I can make sure that they submitted. Their, their plat, their application, their fee paid and everything. But as far as like going into the nitty gritties of the details of everything on the checklist and making sure that that's all about it. That clearly wouldn't be within an hour. I'd at least have to have. A working day to go through and look at their plat to make sure what I assume are the checklist items are, are there.
And hope that you don't have three submissions.
In one day.
In one day, that'll have to be approved within forty.
Yeah, well, at that point, then I would just have to take them case by case and I would need a little bit of time to hit them all. Yeah. But again, if we go back to affording ourselves fifteen days, that's completely attainable. Because that just, at that point. I'm, I'm now have five more business days to, to vet the submittal.
We're looking at how the calendar falls, because we, we don't have the twenty-six, the twenty-seventh, the meeting on the.
Meeting on twenty-six right now is.
We wouldn't be, so we wouldn't meet till the ninth of January.
Right, so that's why we would have to have a meeting on the twenty-seventh. So what we're gonna have to do, anytime we know there's a day off on the calendar. We're going to have to make sure to schedule the Wednesday after as an optional date for a planning commission meeting, were there to be a submittal.
Okay.
Well, and the other issue we may run into with three weeks is if they submit it. On the off week, let's say, let's say they submit it uh, next Tuesday.
Yeah.
And uh, irregardless of holidays, with three weeks, we're gonna, we're gonna have one planning commission in one week. And then we won't have another planning.
Well, that would fall to the ninth. That would make us fifteen days to the ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll always, as long as we're willing to bump it a day before or after, we'll always hit the fifteen days. That's gonna be another fun thing that staff gets to navigate on behalf of the planning commission.
And I only have one other comment. Um, and, and. This may have come up, so this is in uh. Ten twenty-one five paragraph F. Um, so it, the way that it reads to me is that we're, we would be putting the application online. Like if, if I come to you with a subdivision application, we would upload the plans and everything to the website. Um, that's not how I read the co, the, the bill. The list of what has to be submitted for the preliminary application has to be posted online, but not every application. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think that was language from Lisa ironically, Jay. That I in, in added. I think she recommended that language, but honestly, it's not. It's not hard to do because when we put together the packet, we put, we make it available online with all that information. But, but I think, I think I added F, a lot of language in F from her guidance.
Yeah, we'll, we'll double check. I mean, this is. So to be clear, and, and I also wanted to comment earlier. So we are, Smith Hartvixen is getting paid by the state to help with this. This is not coming out of your budget, but with that comes restrictions. So we can only work towards, we can help you in any way internally with staff, with training, with drafting. As long as it's related to implementing SB one seventy-four. Multifamily.
Yeah.
Falls outside of that.
I understand. And, 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 and we're taking that on. I've talked to the city attorney and we feel comfortable with that process.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make clear, that's, that's kind of where. We're focusing on single family, two family and town homes. That's because that's what we're restricted to.
And I think we as staff understand that scope just for the planning commission's sake, and that's what we understand the scope of their assistance to be. That being said, Lisa's been kind enough to help me articulate, trying to match. But what, what you're saying is she won't go into that other stuff that I've bifurcated on the process. But she has said on the phone to me, however, that she, she feels comfortable and appreciates knowing that because then at least it helps her understand why we did what we did.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have to review the whole ordinance to see what might get changed. And frankly, if it doesn't add any time for me to fix typos. I'm gonna do it, even if it's not in this section. So.
Yeah. But again, I, I appreciate Mr. Springer's comments very much. I appreciate all the help from Lisa and, and their team. Uh, in, in helping us to be correct, like I said, she, she indicated we're, we're the first that they're, they're working with on a lot of these things and. It's been insightful, even the information now about this fifteen day thing. Unfortunately, I think I'm gonna have to go back to fifteen and twenty days because. The developer is kind of calling the shots and there's not a lot we can do about it, so it's gonna need to afford us more time. Um, but the only thing I can say, when we start to administer and go through it. We need to do the best we can to. Which is a tough balance, but we need to do our best we can to represent the community and protect the community's interests. But also understand that the state legislature is watching very closely and do it professionally. And, and write and be backed by code when we do what we do.
That's why it's so important to be careful now because. We don't know who's gonna be here in five years, sitting here and sitting in your chair or anywhere else, so.
And there, and there may be developers that, that. Like Mr. Springer said, will go around city to city, just trying to set up legal challenges to, to, for whatever reason too. We don't, I mean, we see it in a lot of other avenues. Yeah. We've seen a lot of other avenues with, with handicap needs and. Tests of free speech and this will just be another, there'll probably be developers that will do similar tests just because they feel like they can, so.
We're working with about twenty cities right now.
Oh.
Um, this is just the first planning commission.
That's, that's what she probably meant then.
Yeah.
My misunderstanding, I apologize.
But I mean, the, the funding was only released last month.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, there, they, the, the books, the, the law's been on the books since March.
Yeah.
But they just released the funding for the assistance.
Of course they did. Well, I wanna make it, I wanna make it known what a great staff we have. And what a great job Mike has done to jump on and us be the first city putting this forward to the planning commission. And to put this in motion. And, and have this all done and hammered out, one of the first people to have this hammered out and how much work Mike has done and how. How lucky we are to have him to represent us and make sure that we cross every T and dot every I. Not everybody has that. Not everybody's willing to sit down and be accommodating to their staff and what they need. And I think it's really important to just. Mike, you do a phenomenal job and you do too, Michelle, but. I just think it's very commendable. Especially to jump on board with this funding there to help us, being that we're not a huge ci. People perceive us as a huge city, but we're a very small resident-based city. In comparison to our retail, so.
And this is, this affects every city with more than five thousand residents.
Right.
And I mean, there are some that are, one of my clients is White City, five thousand and forty-five residents.
They're like, dang it.
Well, and I have to say.
Everybody else, all the smaller ones have until the end of twenty.
Yeah, the end of the year, next year.
But we are very fortunate to have Mike and to have this pushed forward, use the funding that's there. It's, I think this is very commendable and remarkable.
I appreciate that. And I do want to say, I'm a little bit fortunate. We work with one of uh, Jay's counterparts, Adam Long on the RDA. And he's the one that, that hit us up as soon as that funding was released and was like, hey, my firm can help you with this. Do you want me to use it? Wink, wink, nudge, nudge. So. I do appreciate him. Will you let him know? I appreciate him doing that on our behalf. Yeah, I appreciate him directing us to, to do this because. It has been invaluable and I may be good, but I'm certainly nowhere near perfect and I appreciate their help to try to get us right.
But I think that's really commendable that we jumped on board and took, took advantage of that funding while it's here, while we have it.
Well, I looked at a calendar and I realized February first is gonna come pretty fast.
We're mid-December.
Got anxious.
We have uh, coun, we have cities that have their councils meet before their planning commission, so they have to have a special meeting. Of their council after the planning commission recommends up the, the changes.
But we are very fortunate. I think, and I think it's great. We're leading the way.
Can I ask you a question, just a general, how does developers, what is their intent? With the cities on manipulation, it seems like, for a better word. To continue on without any checks and balances other than what we're doing now. I mean, they seem like they got a free rein. To kind of run the gamut, if you will. Am I wrong? I'm looking outside the, 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 you know, the windows of Riverdale here. And I know a lot of cities that run the gamut of developers are, nobody's gonna stop me attitude.
Yeah, there, there is, there is definitely some truth to that. I mean, there's. We have the legislature that we have. Um, and this is, you know, it, it is uh, not uncommon for developers to say if. Local governments won't pitch in, we're not gonna build affordable housing, we're not gonna do, do the things that you want. Um. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's bottom line.
I'm seeing, you're probably seeing a lot of this going between.
Well, and, and you also have a very reactionary um, system here where. Really like, like this ordinance and then the, the uh, the law a few years ago that made it so we can't. Um, mandate how much of a facade can be um, stucco, for example. We can't. We can't um. Deal with those issues. Um, that's all because of a couple of bad cities that were being obstructionist to developers. Because most, by, by and large, you know, looking through what you guys had before. I don't think Riverdale is a place where developers are saying, this place is too hard to work with. We need to go change the law.
Right.
And that's how, that's how most of it's gonna be, but. They will, they will take what they need to uh, to deal with the ones that aren't playing ball.
But I think what concerns us is that we don't have a similar situation because the way that the law and the ordinance is set out now. Um. Situations like happened down in Draper with Edge Homes where those homes slid off the mountain. I could see where a city could be strong armed into saying, yeah, we want to do this and we want to, we're gonna build over this canyon here. And we're gonna.
That's gonna be important for staff as well because there is an exception for geotech issues.
There is?
There is. So if it, but if you haven't identified it, even if it's there, they, they can still build. So.
You gotta be ahead of it.
Right.
Even if you do recognize it. Uh, there are geotech people who will give. A free, it's happened here. We had to go out and get our own and they were totally opposite reports.
Yes.
You know, you'll bring in expert witnesses that will defend both sides of the argument.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that, that is one of those things that, you know, being on top of it. Um, I mean, there's, there's been talk at the legislature or, and with developers of um, basically taking away. Making rezones an administrative uh, action. Uh, and that is based on, again, a handful of places. And in that situation, that's fine if you have a commu, community that has an up-to-date, good, well-laid-out general plan. And then you can use the general plan as kind of the, the zoning, if you're rezoning within some compatibility. But most communities don't have a well-thought-out. Good public uh, process for having a general plan. Um, so you know, then, then the developers come in and they, and then they. Take advantage of the fact that nobody's redone their general plan in twenty years.
This is, yeah, just so you know, we actually went through a whole annual drive, well, year-long gyration of changing our general plan. In anticipation of the very thing you're talking about, more than any reason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're ahead of the game on that.
So, um, I have some other written comments that I'll work with Lisa and make sure we're on the same page with, but other than that, I'm. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Aga, there was, you mentioned that you may have already addressed this, but I noticed that there was a typo that I picked up.
No, is it a different one then?
Um, I, I don't know, because we didn't ever discuss what you had caught.
She, she, she caught Sue and, and changed it to you, so if that was one of them, is there a different one?
There was another one in ten twenty-one four, just above that. Um, where it said option instead of optional.
I noticed that too, as I was reading it. I noticed that too, as I was reading it. Yeah. Meeting is optional, yeah. Ten twenty-four one A, yep.
Ten twenty-one seven F is missing an on. Second line.
Okay, I'm not sure I see that one, but that's okay. Just, well, you sent me over those, yeah. So, and she did, like I said, uh, when I said Lisa, or she, Lisa Watts Baskin did send me a revision and there were quite a few more minor technical things at that point, which is a lot easier for her to see now that the major stuff had been resolved, I think. So that was good. So, so those kind of minor technical changes I will take into account, obviously, on a fourth revision that were this to be approved would go, well, were this to be recommended for approval would go to city council as a part of a final.
Anybody else have any, anymore? Any questions? Well, then we need to uh have consideration to afford recommendations to the city council regarding proposed updates to Title Ten, Chapter Twenty-One subdivisions ordinances as found in the Riverdale City Code as required by the Community Development Department and required by the state of Utah.
Mr. Egger, if I could just ask before a motion, do we need to be specific in the changing of the business days? Um, in the section that we were, we were talking about earlier?
I would certainly make a recommendation that maybe even any items that were noted as needing to be changed during the discussion be changed accordingly. And were I to be confused, I could always refer to Michelle and say, hey, could you help me either listen to or tell me what those things where we discussed. But yeah, that one I do have noted.
Okay.
All right, then a motion would be in order.
In that case, I would like to can, um, forward a favorable recommendation to city council regarding proposed updates to Title Ten, Chapter Twenty-One subdivisions ordinance as found in the Riverdale City Code as requested by the Community Development Department and required by the state of Utah. Adding that we would make any, the city staff will make any changes that we've discussed in the meeting today. And we understand that there might be a few other small, minor changes that will need to happen between now and then.
I'd like to second. All in favor, and please.
Do, do a poll on this one, Kathy.
Yeah, please poll the commission.
Sorry, guys.
You're fine.
Uh, Commissioner Nye?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Spires?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
And that is unanimous and thank you very much. Thanks, Mike. Again, I don't think we can thank you enough.
Seriously, yes.
Seriously, thank you, Michelle, especially for.
Michelle, you do a lot in the background to make sure what we, you handle a lot of difficult situations that we try to help businesses and residents in the city and you help stick to the policy and we appreciate that. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Any comments for that?
Just, just real quick, a reminder, just on the record, tomorrow is the staff luncheon. So if you're able to make it, we'll see you there at the community center.
Mr. Springer, we want to thank you for coming and assisting as well. We appreciate it very much. Uh, then.
Do you want me to, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Too far ahead, I apologize. I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And that is unanimous.